Good evening and welcome to the October 3, 2016, meeting of the Merrimack School Board. Would you please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we're on to item number two, which is public participation. If, and seeing no public outside of staff, I'm going to close public participation. And we will be on to item number three, which is update on the K-12 science curriculum development with Mark McLaughlin, Bill Morris, and Keith Tanner from the upper elementary school. So, welcome.
Thank you. As the two gentlemen are getting set, I'll just introduce them this way. Though Bill and Keith are the two folks here today, I want the board to, and the public to know, that what makes this group really different is how, what a broad base of educators is represented on this committee. Just circumstances wouldn't allow them all to be here tonight. But what's really interesting, I might put a plug for Bill Morris, who's working on a paper about the democratic curriculum development. And that's unique because we really have a team here that's led by Bill that really has prioritized the idea of working together as colleagues to develop a curriculum scope and sequence, K through 12, that really focuses on the boots on the ground, the people who are the practitioners, as being partners in the development of the curriculum. That's a different model than often happens. And so, though they're not here tonight, imagine a big team sitting there, because they are the ones who are really part of the group that Keith and Bill are going to be talking about their work. So, with that, I'd welcome Bill Morris and Keith Tanner.
Well, thank you. So, this is like apple picking. Each year we come and we share out to the board, and it's around the same time as, you know, actually, you know, we pick apples, and it's very much a good start to the year. Thank you for that, this opportunity again, to speak to you about the process and the progress of the Science Curriculum Revision Committee. We welcome this opportunity to update you and share with you. Joining me tonight is Keith Tanner, sixth grade teacher at the upper elementary school. And it is expected that middle school facilitator, science facilitator Jeff Karen will join us following his school's PTG meeting. I've talked to Keith, and should we finish a little early, we may wait for him outside, so he doesn't come running in and be surprised. But the other members of the committee who could not be here this evening are Allison Maguire from Reed's Ferry School, Rebecca Vandenberg from Thornton's Ferry School, Jamie Cudero from Mastical Upper Elementary School, Joe McMahon from Merrimack Middle School, and Pat Scott from Merrimack High School. We have been sharing with the board for the past five years. To briefly review the committee's work, it has been teacher-led and teacher-vetted. Early on in our process, the committee decided that the students at Merrimack would have life, physical, and earth science at each grade, from grades K through six. Teachers piloted the drafts of each of these strands at the K-6 level. Each year, for three years, teachers had the opportunity to implement a strand and then provide feedback to the committee. The committee used the feedback to revise each strand. We have also followed a process of transparency, as teachers and school administrators have been regularly communicated with throughout the process. What this means is that once we complete the process, the approved document will seamlessly be implemented, as teachers have been a part of the process throughout. Keith Tanner now will speak to you about the work of the committee during the 2016-2017 school year.
Good evening. During the 2016-2017 school year, the Science Curriculum Committee continued to meet bimonthly to work on continuing the revision of the Merrimack school curriculum. In addition, we met this past summer for three full-day sessions. During the past year, the committee updated binders for all teachers from K through six schools to reflect the revisions we've made based on teacher feedback. High school science teachers had the opportunity to review the middle school drafts and provide feedback. The team reviewed all seventh and eighth grade units in the same manner as we did for K through six, looking for balance of rigor and inquiry throughout by reviewing the performance indicators. We began having conversations on how the science curriculum can be integrated across all content areas. The committee reviewed the K through eight curriculum and examined how the trajectory of the big ideas links to the enduring understandings and how they span across all grade levels. Then we ensured that the performance indicators were representative of the big ideas. At the end of the year, we will listen to feedback from the middle school, similar to the process we use to collect feedback from the elementary school teachers. The science curriculum drafts for the seventh and eighth grade science were completed as well. The same process will be followed, as with the K through six teachers. Middle school teachers will implement the drafts this school year and provide feedback to the committee at the end of this school year. This feedback will be used to create the final version. Discussions also occurred this past year and summer regarding science curriculum revision at the high school level. Bill will now share about the committee's plan for this upcoming school year.
For the coming school year, the focus will be on implementation of the science curriculum drafts at the middle school and the creation of the high school curriculum documents. Science teachers at Merrimack High School will use the process established by the District Science Curriculum Committee to revise its competency documents. Teachers in each discipline will work with the Science Curriculum Revision Committee. Representative Pat Scott and High School Science Department Head Jim Davis will work with these teachers, and they will use the competencies they developed over the past several years as a guide to create curriculum documents for each high school required course, aligned with the format of our K-8 document. Consistent with the process we've used all along, the documents created by high school teachers this year will be vetted by the District Science Curriculum Committee for inclusion in our curriculum draft. At the completion of this school year, the committee will make any revisions of middle school document drafts, as well as plan for the rollout of the high school documents. The committee continues to follow trends in science education at the state and national level and how they could affect our curriculum. We feel confident that the curriculum we are creating can absorb any of these trends. We continue to feel that the implementation of this revised curriculum should be supported by our current budget levels. Thank you again for your support now and throughout this important process. The committee looks forward to visiting with the board in the future and continue to share its collective efforts in the area of science and inquiry instruction. Thank you. And at this time, would entertain questions.
Excellent. Are there questions from the board? Andy?
So, this is a little backwards, because the next agenda topic we have is covering the Kneecap results for science. So, I guess one of the questions is, when you look at results you see in standardized testing, is there any adjustments you did to the curriculum based on what you're seeing through historical, some of the science results with Kneecap in this case?
Well, we know that inquiry is an area of focus, and we have thoughtfully included inquiry throughout the revised science curriculum. Instead of having it be a separate unit that teachers focus on in isolation, we have tried to weave it through each of the units that our teachers have to teach.
Okay. Any other questions? Michael?
Thank you. I have a question. I'm not sure if this is the right forum to ask this, but with obviously curriculum, are you also looking at possibly time studying at home, whether there's benefits to less study at home, like homework and stuff like that? Is that part of this piece that you would actually look at? The benefits of, you know, more free time for the kids to actually have more, you know, critical thinking, stuff like that, on their own versus actually just going home with four to five hours of homework?
Well, our focus really has been on what students need to know and how it can, what they need to know can be designed in a way so that teachers can effectively deliver that through their instruction. And certainly, we would entertain, you know, other types of conversations, but right now, we're focusing on, you know, just completing the document.
I think if I could, if I could just elaborate, I think in addition to what Bill said, the larger question that you're asking is what's sort of our evolving posture as a district on homework broadly. And I think it's a very interesting question. It's like with many things in our business, there are lots of opinions about that, and you're going to be hard pressed to find two people or five people who all have the same idea about it. I think what we've learned in our, in our work on inquiry in the district outside of the science work is that allowing time in the school day and outside for students to do what we want them to do, which is to love learning and play with their learning, I think that there's compelling evidence that that really counts for something. So, I think our evolution as a district out with science and outside of science is to continue to think that way. Where we struggle is in that there are certainly science components that have to be learned and practiced, and the traditional way to learn and practice them is through homework. And so, what we're trying to conceive of as a district is how do we kind of bring a 21st century, if you will, spin on the idea of balancing the love of learning and play and inquiry and what comes from that up against the need to, you know, be able to, you know, know things and take those things and employ them in the service of that play and inquiry. So, I'm not going to promise you that we've figured that out, but I can tell you that we seriously consider that, again, bigger than the science group, but, you know, as a district, and most recently, that's come out in August Academy. Numbers of groups of teachers have, on their own, begun to ask, you know, what is the purpose of these assignments that we ask students to do, and does it comport with the outcome we seek? And if it does, great. And if it doesn't, what could replace it? So, it's an ongoing conversation that we certainly have undertaken.
Thanks. And I had a follow-up one, someone. What is the collaboration between the different aspects of the, of education, math and science versus English? I know that there was a great piece, I forget who actually brought it up, but there was a lot of crossover in regards to actually trying to teach collaboratively, so that, you know, they might be learning multiple things in different classes. So, is that within these groups, or is it, again, outside of?
So, a couple of answers to that. At the high school, it's probably where you heard that most, and that's absolutely taken off the interdisciplinary courses. And each year over the last, well, so like last year particularly, and then this year, we've really, we're seeing an increase in the number of courses that have been and will be proposed through the traditional process, where those departments really continue to conceive of ways to work together in a seamless way, so that it's not, so that the lines between the contents are not blurred to the point of non-distinction, but, you know, where they're, where the distinctions are less important, because we're just, we're all learning about how to, you know, do an argument. And whether you do an argument in English or in social studies, the principles are the same. And so, we're trying to do that. In the lower grades, August Academy was a good example of where we provided teachers with opportunities to work cross-content, not cross-content, cross-grade levels. So, grade three teachers across the district, grade four. And the theme of that work was integration, you know, how are we really going to try to marry the different content areas in authentic ways and do that universally, so that it's not just a good idea at Reed's Ferry and not implemented at Thornton's Ferry, and so on and so forth. So, again, that, that work is rich right now. The curriculum development piece is being developed more or less, I hate the phrase, but it's the best way to describe it, in isolation. In other words, the curriculum for science isn't being developed in tandem with the curriculum for math, because there are two distinct sets of standards, there are two distinct sets of competencies. But what we're doing in that development is where we're finding links after they're developed to bridge them. And so, that's kind of like, it's like a part one, part two process.
If I could add to that real quick, if that's okay. Sixth grade level, our math unit, our recent math unit had to do with data collection and presentation of data through different graphs and so forth and stuff like that. A science experiment that we did in the lab here just recently lent itself perfectly to that data, so we could create those graphs that we just learned about in math and applied them to the science data. So...
Thanks. And just to kind of give a foreword for what, why I brought that up, is that as a parent of two children in the district, I find that the burden of homework is actually crushing their will to or want to learn in school, just because they're spending so much time offside. So, that's just to give you a background line. Thank you.
Thanks, Michael. Cindy?
I would say for Naomi's benefit too, at the end of the year, a lot of the groups will come, all of the schools will come before us, and they talk about some of the things they've learned or milestones, which is usually a theme of it. And we saw a lot of this type of, I kind of call it a cross-pollination of learning, that was presented to us. Like Reed's Ferry had the artist, is one example. And while they were dressed as an artist, they then learned about history, learning through there. So, there's a lot of examples where you see that, I think, more and more as each year goes on, at least the years that I've been involved with the school board and even on the budget committee. It seems to be, as time is going on, we're seeing more and more of those ways of, I think it just assists and complements learning in different areas by being able to address it under the lens of a different subject. So, I think that you might remember some of those when you first around. There are a couple of examples like that.
You know, Michael, you raised a good point, and we, you know, we always are reflective of our practice. And so, certainly, you know, walking away from tonight, you know, that's one of the things I'll reflect on. And we do, we do dialogue with teachers, you know, our teachers at the K-6 level are on professional learning teams, and that really has led us in areas of dialogue that, that we never could go in the past. And we, you know, teachers talk about common assessments, they talk about, you know, what they're teaching in their class versus another. And so, thank you for raising that.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
And I did have one question, and I don't want to be more anecdotal and data-driven, but, you know, as you've come to, I think this is your fourth year actually coming about the science curriculum, and you've built it from the bottom up. Are you getting feedback from the upper grades on the work that you're doing and how it's impacting their ability to develop skills in this area of science as they're moving up into the upper grades?
I would say that the wonderful thing about our committee work is that it's representative across all levels. From very early on, the high school representatives, Pat Scott, John Scannell before that, were really informative about what, what students will need to know at the other end. You know, we utilize the understand-by-design model to build that curriculum. And so, we hear from people like Jeff Karen at the middle school, Joe McMahon, that the students are coming prepared for science, they're coming prepared to be good thinkers. So, I think, you know, we, not just with science, with math, with all the areas of content, we have been dialoguing cross-levels in ways that really have been increasing people's understanding of what, what learning looks like at the different levels, and I think everyone's benefiting from that.
Excellent. Thank you. Andy? Sure.
More just a comment than a question. You said something in the effect of, all the changes you're making have no budgetary impact. I would challenge you that as you go into the budget period, if there's something that you think you need to really move the needle on some of this stuff, don't be afraid to ask, because I think, at least me as a board member, when we look at the budget, we like to, I like to look at academic things and where there's something new you're trying to do. I mean, we see in science replacing microscopes and things like that, which is normal things, but some new, some new investment, whether it's in technology or something like that, and we can see a cause and effect, that's the kind of stuff from an educational thing, at least I like to see. So...
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. It was a great visit again, and keep up the great work. Which brings us to item number four, which is the science kneecap. So, Andy gave it away. That was our next, next agenda item. And I'll give it back to you, Mark.
Okay. So, it's a great segue. In fact, I want to pick up on something that we, actually, if I could, if I could talk about this by actually leaving my prepared remarks and actually pick up on something that you were just saying. Shannon, your question was really a good one, which is, are the upper grades being able to speak to any impact of some of this work on the skills that, you know, that they're seeing? So, what's interesting about that, and this is a segue to this, is that the answer to that question, neither Bill nor Keith are actually, you know, in those upper grades, middle and the high school. But the answer is yes. But the thing that's interesting is, they're seeing it in the design of the assessments that we're creating. So, we have made a commitment in our district to trying to develop more authentic assessments, more authentic classroom experiences around setting up labs, setting up problems, or having problems be presented that students are encouraged to apply their learning and their knowledge to, that are, you know, kind of, that are unique and that are not textbook-driven, let's say. And in those assessments, we see students increasingly familiar with and able to engage in inquiry-based projects, not perfectly and not all together, and there are holes. Every, you know, I mean, there are holes we're trying to fill in various places, like there always are. But as a general rule, we're seeing that more and more. Back to this, these results, as I said a few weeks ago, when we're introducing S-BEC, it's a data point, these are data points. If you look at the results, you see over three years, fairly stable results, a little up one year, a little down another year, nothing dramatic, really. I think I would love to see the needle move on these data points. I recognize it's a data point, and we've said all along, there are multiple data points, but on this data point, I would like to see the needle move a little bit more, because if you see where we continually lag is in areas of inquiry, because the way science breaks down, there's physical science, earth-space science, life science, and inquiry. And in inquiry, you know, we continue to, that's our area. The issue with kneecap is that the way that assessment is organized, it's really around primarily recall. So, we're not really doing recall so much anymore in our district. That's not to say that there aren't absolutely valid data points in the kneecap assessment that we can and should pay attention to, and we are. But I am saying that there is a little bit of a mismatch between sort of what we're prioritizing and how we're assessing certain skills and understandings versus the very sort of largely recall, highly content-driven areas of kneecap. So, and again, I don't dismiss it, it's important, and I want to see that needle move. And the way we've tried to do that, Bill and Keith alluded to, is by not having like an inquiry unit, like, okay, guys, it's October 3, so now we're going to start our inquiry unit, and it's going to be done in two weeks, but rather embed that, you know, through all of our instruction and the curriculum development over these last years for all the grades. That's exactly what we've been trying to do. And so, you know, it's, it's not, the issue is continuing to try to think of creative ways that students can genuinely learn the content, recall the content, because that's important, but then apply the content in a way that demonstrates they understand. If there were a, an assessment in smarter balance, it's just interesting, science assessment, smarter balance would be, because that's kind of how that assessment is organized, it might be interesting to see that result. But kneecap just assesses a different thing. So, you know, that's neither here nor there, but, but I would say to you, if you look at a three-year average, you'll see at the four different performance levels, not a lot of data fluctuation, you know, it's fairly standard. So, you might say in three, three years of results, do they begin to show a trend? Probably, they're beginning to show a trend, which is, you know, our, students are falling in kind of a, you know, a level three for the fourth grade, almost 50% of students performing at level three. And, you know, just, it's just kind of, hasn't changed much. So, so, I'm happy to have a dialogue about this or other things, but I just wanted to kind of start with riffing off of what Shannon's question was about, are we seeing? Interestingly, not so much in the kneecap science data, but in other forms of data that we're increasingly collecting.
So, I just want to be clear on something you said, because I picked up this message from what you said, which is, we're not teaching the assessment tests, we're teaching to the content of the curriculum, and sometimes they just don't align. Would that be fair?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Naomi?
I was curious. When you talk about the inquiry, it's not just this district, it seems to be a statewide phenomenon. And I was curious if you had any insights regarding that.
So, you're right, Ashley, and thank you. I meant to point that out. So, I have, I have spoken to my counterparts in other districts about this. We all recognize that it's, it's an interesting phenomenon. And one of us, when we figure it out, will write a book, and we will publish that book, and, you know, you'll all be very proud of us. I don't, I can't say that any one of us have figured it out. We're all, we're all attacking it. What we're trying to do is embed. I don't cast aspersions on any other plan. There are some people who choose to really have kind of discreet units about like how we teach inquiry or how we do inquiry. And that's a perfectly defensible thing to do. It just, for our way of thinking, that's, that doesn't necessarily build lifelong learning. It's just, it seems like, okay, I learned it, I studied it, I got an A on my inquiry unit, but now I can't, I can't really inquire, or I can't ask probing questions, or I could be easily fooled by, by a complicated problem, because I'm not recognizing that it's an inquiry problem. And so, we've really tried to embed that. That's our approach. On kneecap, I must say, it's not really showing. I'm just trying to be honest, it's not really showing on kneecap. It is showing in other things that we're doing. But it is a state phenomenon, and every one of my colleagues are equally focused on it. And, you know, we talk about it, you know, through email, group chats, and so on, you know, it happens quite a bit.
Michael and I have Andy.
Thank you. Mark, thanks for that. One of the things that doesn't give me a full picture here is actually a lot more data. So, like, we have the mean point for the state, but we don't really have like the full spectrum of, you know, lowest point and highest point for the school districts. So, one of the things that I'm always interested in is trying to understand, what are some of the schools that are excelling in these doing, and is that shared in the community? Do we, do we get to gather that, okay, let's, another school district did really well, does the state provide like some type of synopsis of what they might be doing to kind of help or anything like that? Is there any sharing, or is it pretty much go and try to figure it out?
So, it probably wouldn't surprise you that, you know, sometimes colleagues don't want to talk about money, because, you know, do you make a little more than I do? And the state doesn't release, I couldn't get Bedford's data, because they don't release it broadly. So... it broadly. So, so there isn't a lot, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't know. Now, they may, they may, you know, we talk, we talk a lot about best practices. So, but I wouldn't know from data that the state provides, you know, who's, who's doing the best, let's say.
Yeah, and I, I guess I wouldn't, I wouldn't be looking for you to just have the data. I'm looking at the state actually stepping up and saying, hey, you know, this school district, we actually know is doing very well, let's go and talk to that school district, let's figure out what they're doing, and then share it with the masses, so that we all get better.
Right.
It doesn't sound like the state's doing that.
No, but what we do, what we do is, we do talk about, we don't, I would say, we don't talk numbers very often, I will say that, with colleagues, but we do talk about best practices. So what I just described to you is about embedding inquiry in all of our curriculum, that's something I've shared broadly with my colleagues. And, you know, they've been intrigued, and, and some have agreed and enjoyed it, and some have said, oh, I don't really see that, that's the way to go. And so, we've talked like that. So we do talk about best practices, in, particularly in our South Central region, you know, the superintendent's talked a lot about how we're divided into regions, and so our South Central region, there's, there's, there's talk about that all the time. But if it's a state organizing, my answer would be, they don't do that at the moment.
Go figure.
Thank you.
Andy?
So, I suggest you look in the mirror, because when I looked at the more detailed data, because the top tables above the average graph, you made a statement earlier that says, for the most part, we're sort of in a level three, that's where the bulk of the students and everything is. But if you look at the last three years, not so much in the fourth grade, but in the eighth and the 11th, in this last year that you've tested, both in grade four, or grade eight and grade 11, you've increased by seven and five percent in each of those two grades respectively, at the highest level, which takes away a little bit from the bottom, a little bit from the middle, and shows that you're, you're moving a little bit, or you're getting more at the level. And, and one of the challenges is, is that the state numbers have always seemed to have ticked a little bit higher at that level one than Merrimack has, except for the last year in the top two grades. So I guess, you may not know off the top of your head, but a challenge to the, to the overall district is, what have we done differently? Because that's a fairly significant, especially in two grades. If I saw it in one, I think it's a cohort. If I see it in two, it means, maybe there's a trend here, and it would be good to see in subsequent years, but it's something to consider.
Just, just for clarification, that's actually the lowest level? Level one?
Is that?
Yeah, right, right. Level, level four would be.
Okay, so then, then let's flip it around. What have you done to have more at the bottom end? Is it the cohorts that are doing it?
Right, right, yeah. No, I hear you. I mean, that's, that continues to be, you know.
Obviously, my point was lost, but the.
No, I hear you.
But it's, but whenever you see a trend like that, you say, is it a cohort? Is it a change in what you're doing, right versus wrong?
Well, you know, I mean, it's easy to, it's, it's easy to say cohort, right? You know, it's easy to say, oh, it's just those kids. But, I mean, I wouldn't want to do that. I mean, there's, I, I continue to maintain, there's, you know, there is more that we can do, and there's more that we must do. If, if year after year, inquiry continues to present itself as the reason that our, our performance on this one data point is, you know, not moving a lot, then, then our answer to that, over a period of time, has been to embed inquiry into our curriculum, curriculum development, which we have in draft form, been implementing for a couple of years. So, you know, there are lots and lots of factors. The profile of a student group, a cohort, is one factor, but that's, that's the easy way out, and we're not going to say, oh, it's just that. I mean, you know, I, I can't, it's, I, I couldn't define for you, what is the reason for that uptick that you point out? I, I can't. All I know, and this is why I wanted to pivot off of Shannon's question, the question was, are the upper grade teachers seeing, I'm paraphrasing, but more capable students? And in general, we are. What's interesting is not reflected in this data set. So, but, we don't discount this data set, you know, I can't, I can't have it both ways. I can't say to you, you know, we have multiple data points, but please only look at the ones that show us off well. I mean, we have multiple data points, what you look for is a certain kind of triangulation. That's really what you hope, because if you see a trend in one data point that's going this way, and then it's confirmed by another assessment, and it confirmed by a third assessment, you know, that's called triangulation, and you say, okay, we've, we're really on to something here. Kneecap results are turning out, for science, are turning out to look like an aberration a little bit, because the ways that we're training our teachers to talk about science, to teach science, and all our content, for that matter, and to assess in science, authentic assessment, is showing students who are more able to create problem sets for themselves, to, to be able to transition from one problem set to another problem set, though the variables change, they recognize that it's asking generally the same thing. This we find often, students have a problem with, they can answer questions if you give, plug in exactly the same numbers, let's say, but if you remove a number, they kind of don't recognize that it's the same principle, because you've confused them by the num, by the number change. And so, we've really tried to, you know, teach the principle, and say, look, it could be a five, it could be a 500, it doesn't really matter, it's the principle. So, in those kinds of things, we're seeing an increase in students who are able to say, ah, you can't fool me, I get what this really is. That's what we're seeing. That is not admittedly really reflected in these results. And the only thing that can really account for it, is that these results, because of the nature of the assessment, and I'm not trying to, it's a good assessment, and it tells us good information. And it is also true that it assesses one kind of thing that we're increasingly veering away from, because all our other assessments really are more application-driven than a kneecap assessment is. That's just a fact.
I think I have Andy to Naomi.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow on real quick. So, obviously, the way that you're teaching is not, you're, you're heading more in a direction to try to beat a lifelong learning stuff, rather than the memorizing and, and all that, and the test is going further away from that, which may be what you're seeing at the low end, you know, sort of change my analogy around. Are there other, I mean, I know we've talked about the testing for English and math for the, the Common Core and the Smarter Balance. Is there any talk at the state level about changing in exams or standardized testing around science that might more accurately reflect this over time?
I've not been party to it. I, you know, there's, there have been a number of changes. Recently, you know, we, we had a one year for Smarter Balance, grade 11, and then that changed, and then it was SAT. So, you know, clearly, we're in a flux period right now, I think, with assessments. There are lots of, you know, with the reauthorization of, you know, the education, the ESSA, you know, Secondary Schools Act, and so on. I mean, there's just changes afoot. What that portends for science assessments, I'm not sure, but I've not been privy to any announcement that we're going to move away from this, you know, anytime soon. But having said that, there might be a committee right now who's planning to make some announcement tomorrow, I don't know.
Naomi? Part of my question was just answered, thank you very much for bringing that up. I did want to say one thing. The extent to which you're using this for introspection is laudable. I would say one thing that I think might be encouraging to look at in this, and feel free to fact-check my numbers as I do this, since we're prone to error, but if, say, in a grade four kneecap, the 2015-16 mean scale scored is 440, it seems to me that a heck of a lot of the students in level two must be very close to tipping over to level three for that mean to be possible. So I think that your, your efforts in, in inquiry might bear, bear a great amount of fruit in the overall level for the students in the district over time.
I appreciate that, that insight, thank you.
Excellent, thank you. The one thing, you know, we always talk about, and I did kind of set you up for that, with, we don't teach through assessments, we teach through curriculum, and I think that's the right plan. But I think that there's so many data points that will get lost in a report that stands alone like this. And I know that we have tools at our disposal that we're using. I think, you know, we, we definitely test on our active students, but we also track our graduates, I believe with the software, what schools are going to, what majors they're trending in, their graduation rates, those kind of things. It can show whether they, you know, the student that we produce for the college market has a, has a strong foundation to thrive in a, a university environment in, in the sciences. So, and, you know, we always have the extracurriculars as well, and we cannot say enough about the successes of our Science Olympiads, the biodiesel program that we have, the, the chop shop, the first robotics. So, regarding STEM, I really feel that we have shown our applicable skills quite well, and I think that having that data to support it, tells a better story. So, that being said, you know, I did not want to leave a snapshot of a test result as, as the only vision of our science, and of course, our curriculum as well. Getting those regular updates is, I think, is important for parents. So I'm glad we had those together tonight. But the, the multiple data points, I think, tell the big story, so. And I think we're, we're in decent shape, and maybe a snapshot test doesn't tell us, really exhibit our true potential. So, I just wanted to put that out there for kind of the last, you know, the last thought on it from me, so. Are there any other questions or comments on the kneecap scores? Seeing none, we will go on to the capital improvement plan, which has nothing to do with, may have something to do with science, we'll say, but probably not. And I will turn that over to, I guess it's to me. So, good lord, God help us all. Well, the capital improvement plan, we just, we went over it last meeting, and we talked about some of the projects coming up. And also, we talked about one of the movements that was made, which was the field upgrade. It was moved by the Planning and Building Committee from the 22-23 budget up to the 19-20 budget, and that would be for going from natural to artificial turf to allow more sports to participate throughout the year. So, that being said, I think a lot of it looks familiar from prior years. Are there any questions or comments on this year's capital improvement plan? Andy?
So, I know that my brethren in the Planning and Building Committee, Committee will probably lynch me for this, but one of the things I tried to do is look at bonded debt, this, this handy-dandy multi-year spreadsheet here. By putting the track, or not the track, excuse me, the field where it is, it happens to be the la, the, when we still have two of our major bonded debts, Honeywell retrofit at 467,000, and the MHS addition at 319. I would prefer to move the track, the field out to 2021, to allow us to have completed the Honeywell energy retrofit, and then be in the last year of the MHS additions, because if we choose to bond it, then it would be something where the bond would not interact with any other bonded debt other than the remaining middle school. Because in the, in the year 20, 2021, we remove all bonded debt except for the middle school. So, in terms of looking pragmatically at the multi-year, I know the reason they moved it in was to save some money, it's about $100,000 each year, if you move it in. I think from a planning perspective, I would prefer to see it there, because then it shows at least, we're looking at the bonded debt aspect to things that we do here. So, I would, I would, I'd like to make a motion that we move the, the field from 1920 to 2021, because of that reason.
Is that a second, Michael? You had, I think you meant 22-23 to 1920?
No, it's, it's in 1920 right now, and I want to move it to 2021.
2021, it's just one year out.
See, it's, it's, well.
Honeywell would be done at that time, but not the.
Right, but the first year, when you do bonded debt, the first year of a bonded debt is always like, nothing. Sorry, I should have.
So, for, for the sake of clarity and our scribes and sanity, can you repeat your motion?
I'll rewind.
Thank you.
Okay. So, I, the, currently, currently, the Planning and Building Committee took the, the field that was in 22-23, and moved it to 1920.
Okay.
My motion is to take that field in 1920, and move it out by one year to 2021.
And that was what, your second thing, Michael?
Yes.
Excellent, okay. And, did you have any further discussion?
And just, just clarifying for Michael, the reason I said that is because our experience of working with bonded debt, such as when we worked at the, with the SAU sped building, the first year of a bonded debt is very small. It's, it's about 30,000 or less than that. So, it would not have an impact necessarily in that year. The first year the bonded debt hits us with any size is the year that we're without bonded debt, other than just the remaining of the middle school. So, it keeps us level, it actually drops us down quite a bit, because the bonded debt would be less for that. We obviously need to discuss how many years you bond it, but I think that 1.6 million, or in that year, it'd be probably 1.7, is probably what the amount would be. It's probably too much to chew in one year to do that. So, that's the rationale behind my motion.
Okay. And can I just make, if it's a question or a point of clarification, we'll find out when I'm done. And that is, in the year, next year would be 1819, not this coming year, but 1819, we're looking at putting forth to the voters, the SAU sped building, which will be your second bond. If passed.
If passed, right.
If passed. So, that's a potential debt that we would.
However, what I didn't mention is.
Okay.
This, this is the, the year we're, budget year we're talking about now, is the last year for the Honeywell natural gas conversion.
Correct.
Which is a bonded debt that is fairly close to what an SAU sped building would be, within a little bit. So, I didn't talk about that, but there's, last year, I think I talked about that, as being a justification to put it in the year it was for the SAU sped building, because there is that one other bonded debt that's there.
Right. And the energy retrofit will have been paid off as well through Honeywell, so all the Honeywell's off the table.
Well, not until, but, but, from my motion, yes.
Yes.
2021.
But you still have one year of, I think it's.
Of the high school additions.
High school additions, yep.
But that's the one where we would only have an overlap that year of some small amount for the first year bonded debt for field.
Okay, fair enough. Okay, I'm, I feel clear on your motion and your, your method. Are there any questions or comments to the motion? Naomi, and then Cindy.
I just wanted to double check that I recall correctly, that the only reason it was moved was for the cost of, and there's no immediate need for the field to be repaired or replaced.
You could have a fairly long debate on that, because there's some people who says you should convert it to a turf field sooner versus later to make more use of it, and make it more usable year-round, more field usage. That's a discussion we've had once at this, a couple of times at this table. And we've sort of tabled it for other things that are of higher priority to, to us, such as the sped building and, and the track, which we did last year and stuff. So, you know, it's not, every year you can rebuild, you can sort of reconstruct the field, plant more grass, try to make it more solid. It drains well, there's not a real, like, a taking time by necessarily, but there's a belief that if you put a turf field, you get much more utilization out of it. So, it could be this year, it could be five years from now, whenever, that answer would be the same. And they did move it in, because they've, every year you move it in, potentially, it's a little bit cheaper to do, so.
Right. Cindy?
I just wanted to say I'm going to support Andy's motion. I don't have a problem moving it out, back to where it was. I think that it's, makes sense. When you look at it, where our bonded debt is, I also think that it's something that can be reevaluated, because that's not going to immediately impact this next budget year, and that's something that, you know, could be discussed next year. So I'll be supporting the motion.
Sounds good, Michael?
Thank you. I'm also going to be supporting the motion, because I think that it's obviously something to look at the tax burden on the community, and I think that all the taxpayers are obviously looking at it very closely. So I think that being able to spread that out, so that it's less of an impact is, makes sense. I do also want to say that, I, I think that with these, the couple of these items, that I would like to call on the community to maybe figure, find out ways that we might be able to offset taxes by, you know, raising money through different ways.
That's actually one of the charges to the Planning and Building Committee, we should, should be hearing about it at some point.
I think it's November, yes.
So, I mean, just, because with all the sports that are actually using it, I think that there's a lot of resources that we could do to try to, obviously, get that. And if they can raise more money quickly, we can definitely reevaluate the timing of it. So, thanks.
Thank you. So, that being said, we'll put the motion to, to a vote. All those in favor of moving the field upgrade from two, 2019 to 2020, in the amount of 1.6 million dollars, to 2019 to 2021, I think I said it wrong myself, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, none. And the motion carries 500. Are there any other proposed adjustments to the CIP? I'm just waiting, you have one, Andy? I'm just waiting, uh, you have one, Andy? Another one? Others?
Well, it's a, it's a comment.
Oh, okay, comments, fine.
It's a comment. So I'm, I'm prepared to accept this, to, to approve the CIP the way that it is right now.
Okay.
But the comment, which sort of gets a little bit ahead of your budgeting message, which is coming a little bit.
Don't steal my thunder.
No, 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 but one, just one dimension, one dimension. So we've talked about, um, the items on here in, in pretty much a lot of detail. We know that the, so, so as a summary to people, this budget year we're talking about, it's replacing the ventilation system, a roof on Thornton's Ferry, um, removal of asbestos at the high school, technology upgrade, which we tend to have every year. And then finally paving for, um, O'Gare Drive, the front bus loop as well as the sidewalk. Um, in general, most of these things, I believe, are critical. But we also, because we didn't get a budget pass last year, we got default. We've been under a lot of, um, scrutiny and pressure to listen to the voters. And I think, at least for me, I have. And I'm hoping that if we approve the CIP, when we get to the point of looking at what we're going to do, um, the paving one is one I would love to see as a separate warrant article and not something we do through the operating budget. I know that we, as a board for the last several years, have traditionally put everything in the CIP in the operating budget. And I think this is an opportunity for us to take something that, to give the voters more granularity of a say. Um, the other items, I believe, roof, the ventilation system, and asbestos removal, we need to do. And therefore, I think it's prudent on us to make it part of the, the core operating budget. But I think for the paving, I think it'd be a good, a good thing to, to let the voters chime in on, so.
Yeah, I just want to clarify one thing you said, and it's about, uh, how the voters, um, are ma, wanting us to listen, and I hope they realize we always do. I think what it is that we want to make it clear is, um, by, I guess, you know, whenever you're kind of doing a dialogue with someone, you repeat back what they're saying to make sure that they know that you heard them. And that's communication. I think that's the backbone of the growth that we as a board have to do this year. So, and, and we are taking steps to that end. So I think this is a great opportunity for us to do that. Um, but if the voters, you know, we do like to hear more, um, you know, we do, we, a lot of us have social media, some of us miss messages, some of us catch them. Um, it's not what I would call scientific communication. But we are open and available to hear everything that, um, our voters have to say about anything. The CIP are big ticket items. So this is an area where when we were putting it in the budget, you know, they need to tell us what questions they have. And then, you know, we're definitely open to having a very structured and what I would call cohesive conversation about what's going on with those items and why they're appropriate and necessary. And I think, you know, the board's meeting is the best way to do it because when one individual member answers, it doesn't, it's not the voice of the board. Three people is the voice of the board. So, um, it can be through, um, communication, it can be through meetings, that your attendance, um, you know, letters to us as a board. We are so open to hearing what you have to say and concerns that you have, so. Uh, that being said, I wanted to clarify that before it went, uh, we, we definitely are hearing uh, what you're having to say. Um, but is there any other adjustment to the CIP as it stands with the one adjustment? Seeing none, um, would anyone like to entertain a motion to accept the CIP as amended? Michael?
I move to approve the CIP as amended.
Is there a second? Seconded by Naomi. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, none, the motion carries five zero zero.
I'd like to just comment, I'm glad that Michael made the motion because he chose not to vote on any budget items from, that were proposed when he wasn't on the board. So I'm glad to see him make the motion for this one.
Kicking it off for the new season, there you go. So, seeing that, we are on to item number six, which is the board's response to the new policy. And before I go there, I will tell you that, um, Zev is excused from tonight's meeting, and we wish him and his family a happy new year. Um, so, um, going on to that, we will go with the new policy. Um, student members of the school board. Um, it was, would normally have been a consent agenda item, but because, uh, we may have differing votes, we wanted to make sure that there was the opportunity to record that. Um, are there any questions or comments on the, um, student member of the school board policy as it's been presented? Seeing them, we'll put the, the policy to a vote. All those in favor of the policy as presented signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Michael, the motion carries four one zero with Board Member Thompson in opposition.
Could I just ask who moved it and seconded it?
Oh. Oh, we didn't, you're right.
We need a motion and a second, just.
Awesome. Good, good point, I thought I had it. So is there a motion to accept it? Cindy, second? Andy? We've got it now. Are we still four one zero? In favor, I'm just going to do it so we have it. Four. Opposed, one, so four one zero, sorry. And I should, it's not even because it's late, because it's only five of eight, so it's my bad. Um, on to item number seven, which is the board's response to the New Hampshire School Boards Association resolutions. Um, at our last meeting in your packets, and again, this meeting in your packets, you have the, uh, resolutions from the New Hampshire School Boards Association, and we've also shared with you the calendar for, um, proposing resolutions. Are there any resolutions that we want to bring before the NHSBA at the delegate assembly in January? Michael?
So, I, I'm, I'm not sure if we should have a discussion about this first or not, but, um, the one item that I'd like to try to address is, I think, is a challenge to probably many school districts, is the opt-in policy, um, that, that people have to actually opt into any of the, you know, surveys or anything like that. And, and I understand, um, the concern by constituents of, you know, wanting to have that ability to opt in, but I think by that, it actually does take away the possibility of many different children actually taking part in the surveys, uh, for many different reasons, whether it be that the communication's just not seen by the parent, the, uh, child doesn't bring it home. There, there could be many different means that, uh, the reason that they would actually not opt in. So I wasn't sure if there would be a way to communicate that maybe it's better to do an opt-out policy, but also have communications that need to be aligned with that when it goes out. So like actually having certain structure around the communication to make sure that parents know that they do have this option to opt out and which ones they could opt out at, whether it's be in the year or each time. But I'm not sure, I've never done this one, this before, so I'm not sure.
And we can all say ditto, because in my time on the board, we've never done a, a petition resolution. Um, I did give a quick call to Barrett Christina just to get his thoughts on it. And, um, he is our Assistant Executive Director of the New Hampshire School Boards Association. He's also the legal counsel. And, um, asking what, what, what his thoughts were on that kind of a resolution. And he said, um, it would be nice for the NHSBA to have such a resolution. Um, you know, would it necessarily change the legislature? No, but having it as part of the platform and position would be nice. I think that the board has faced opt-in versus opt-out challenges with, um, with, uh, some of the policies are coming from Concord and with the appropriate level of communications, which of course, we're still constantly evolving and developing and improving. But having the parents opt out gives them, still gives them the voice. But having to opt in creates a lot of work for, uh, school districts because opting in means that you have a higher percentage of those who would opt in than opt out. And, you know, instead of getting five percent that don't want to do it, you have to count for ninety-five percent who do. So I think that, you know, it would be a great position for us to take as a board. Um, we would have the next couple of weeks to draft it and bring it to the board's table uh, two weeks from tonight, and that gives us two days to turn it in as long as we feel we can put something, um, viable forward. So I don't know how the rest of you feel, but I think it's a, it's a good idea. And if so, we can, uh, Michael and I can start working to developing. Um, Andy?
My only, I, I completely understand. My only comment is, um, it's kind of different that we propose this. In the same year, we're putting a communications committee together that might be able to automate and smooth the approach of an opt-in or an opt-out. I mean, but I guess maybe the alignment's right, I don't know. I'm just, I mean, this is the first I've heard of it, so I'm thinking off the top of my head. But you talked about communication being key for this. And we're talking about communication this year, and we're going to try to, to potentially do a resolution that flips what, the way we've done it in terms of opt-in, opt-out. So I'm not sure how I feel, it's just a comment off the top of my head as I'm sitting here.
Cindy?
Yeah, I mean, I think that, um, there's a couple of ways to look at it. And one of them, I think, is, um, I look at it maybe from a common sense perspective. And it's more in line with what we were just talking about, that you're looking at the exception is the few that will opt out versus everyone opting in. So, I mean, just from a, a common sense standpoint, it makes sense to manage for the lesser amount than requiring it for the greater amount. Um, my concern with having it be an opt-in is for a lot of reasons, particularly as we do hone communications, that, um, there's kids that will miss out on learning opportunities um, in a, in a greater number than anything. Those that, those parents that want to opt out, I think it's important for them to understand what they can opt out of. But I hate, in the meantime, to hurt the education for those, for the majority of the kids that, um, need to benefit from the learning and instruction.
Correct.
So that's the first thing. The second thing is to manage that, um, to manage the opt-in process. Again, just elaborating a little more on what Shannon said, you know, requires resources. And it's technology resources, it's human resources, and it comes with a lot of expense. And so we also then are on the hot seat to make sure that we have the right mechanisms and the right people and salary dollars associated with being able to track to opt-ins, follow up. We didn't get your opt-in. That, that takes a lot of time when you have a live person trying to track down the opt-ins because they don't want a child to miss out on the learning opportunities. So I definitely support. Um, I would say also, finally, um, in my line of business, we do a lot of communications, and we do communications where members have to now, um, either opt into cell phone communications and some things like that. And it's, it's a very difficult thing, and it's very, much affects the engagement. Um, so the, I definitely think the opt-out is the way to go.
And the resolution would be for the state of New Hampshire. So knowing what resources we are in good shape to have, know that, think of the worst-case scenario districts in the state who wouldn't even be dream of having such resources available to them. And some of the cooperative districts that have so many schools feeding into it, um, that don't have, you know, you have small school boards that all feed into a larger district and that superintendent has to manage out that kind of, that kind of content. So, you know, this is a statewide initiative, and really what we're looking, what this resolution would be looking to do would be to acknowledge that legislation that requires opt-in is detrimental to, to the schools that are trying to deliver the education, you know, based on those limitations for what they're doing in Concord. You know, let us control that locally, but if you are in the right legislation, make sure it's an opt-out versus an opt-in, because there are school districts that they'll be, they'll be in over their heads if they have to manage that kind of stuff, worse than, worse than us. So, Michael?
Thanks, and just to, um, Andy's point, uh, I understand what you're saying, but again, I think that, uh, Cindy kind of made that comment about the, the burden of time and resources uh, that is needed to actually take and do all the opt-ins versus the opt-outs. But I do want to emphasize that I, I do understand the, um, the, uh, the, sorry, the parents that do want that option to opt out. And I want to make sure that with this resolution, we make it clear that there should be multiple lines of communication. I know that we have the communication committee coming up, and we might be able to even revise this next year. But to make it clear that we feel that there'd be multiple ways to communicate, whether it be, uh, an email, you know, a phone call, you know, whether it be quarterly spurts to say, hey, you have this opportunity to opt out again, and here's the ones that are coming up. I think Cindy brought up about having a page with all the different ones that you would be opting out from and some details about them, which I think would be helpful too. But I do want to make it clear that there would be, hopefully, more communications so that parents do know what's happening. But, uh, I know that I'm probably going to get some calls regarding this, but I want to make sure that parents understand that I, I do want them to have the option to opt out. It's just the opting in does become a burden on the administration and becomes, can miss out on individuals that are adding information to the school district that we can better the, the school district with, so.
Why do you want to weigh in?
Yeah, well, I, I want to weigh in more on process, so I understand, um, what Mike is offering up. So because you are preparing this for the delegate assembly, so this really goes way beyond mermaid. I mean, what you're doing as a board is you're, you're putting together a resolution, which you will act upon on October seventeenth. So I'm going to ask, because Shannon sits on the New Hampshire School Boards Association board, that helps us a lot because she's been present to see this happen. And we haven't had, uh, a resolution go before NHSBA in a very long time. So if I could ask if, Mike, if you and Shannon could work together to get this prepared? So this needs to come before you in your packet, so you have a chance to look at it. And notice the space on the page, that's the more interesting thing. It has to be so tight, uh, clear and concise, like it's like, don't go over this, this little space with what you're intending to do, and you can understand why. Um, and so then the notion would be that you would act upon it on the seventeenth. So it would be waiving a two-week rule because there won't be enough time to submit it to NHSBA by the twenty-first. And then what's going to happen is that resolution, if it passes you, is going to go to the School Boards Association, and that board has to take a look at it and, and either recommend it or not recommend it. And then we won't know its outcome until the delegate assembly in January. So it's really an elongated process, a good process, but just elongated. And I felt important to point that out because of timing and process, so is that?
And what, what happens at the NHSBA level is that, um, all of the petitioned resolutions come to the executive committee, of which I am part of that, not, and then it will go to the board. So, um, what happens at the executive committee is it will be reviewed for legal viability. So that the, um, way that the, um, resolution is written will, will support New Hampshire's, um, New Hampshire law and allow us to, uh, move forward. And it also gets a recommend or not recommend by the executive committee and the board. So before it even gets to the delegate assembly, it'll have a couple of layers of review at the NHSBA level for, uh, for success, to try to set it up for success. Cindy?
So let's say it gets to the executive committee, and they say, oh, this is really good, except for this, you know, one sentence or something like that. What happens then? Is it, is it tweaked or is it rejected?
Yeah, you'll see that alternate language, you'll see it as it was written in an alternate suggested language.
Thanks.
And then you'll see that delegate assembly will have the choice to vote on the original or the alternate language. So. So if there are no questions, we will work in the next couple of weeks to get a draft together and, and get it over to you, and, and, uh, hopefully it will work out well. So on to item number eight, which is the year-end surplus to reduce taxes and fiscal year two thousand sixteen seventeen adequacy grant with Matt.
Thank you. The latter part of the, um, item, item eight, the adequacy grant piece, uh, was first known to us via an email from the state of New Hampshire Department of Education at around three o'clock on Friday afternoon. So that's why it didn't make the, uh, the initial preliminary agenda. So I just thought I'd, I'd mention that before we begin and just kind of say that because of that and the information I'm about to give you on that, it is a good time to have a nice surplus to reduce the tax rate. And I'm going to tell you what that is right now. Currently, uh, that, uh, we have a, a surplus on assigned fund balance, what it's specifically called, to reduce taxes that we're going to, to turn in when the rate gets set in November, end of October, of around four point nine million dollars. Three point three of that was an appropriation surplus, which means we have our amount budgeted, and we spent less than what we had budgeted by around three point three million dollars on a seventy-one million dollar budget. Some of the areas that were, savings were realized in was in salaries, uh, benefits, uh, maintenance because of utility costs, and special education. Around eight hundred thousand dollar savings in special education alone through, uh, what Special Ed Director John Fabrizio and his predecessor David St. Jean had always done is they have the philosophy to build programs in district to keep kids in their home school and, and avoid out-of-district placements where possible because they feel that, and parents feel that being in their own school is, uh, much better for the child, uh, and much better for the whole school community than being off in an out-of-district placement. So there was some savings in that regard. As far as what adds to the. As far as what adds to that, to get it to the 4.9, there's a revenue surplus. So at the beginning of the year, we budget for what we think are going to be the revenues. And this year, which I believe was the third year running, and it is the last year, so we're talking about 2015, 2016, we received that million-dollar settlement from the trust, the health trust, for being overcharged all those years. So that was something that was not estimated because it wasn't a certainty that we'd get it. So we left it unestimated, and therefore it came in as unanticipated, and it's in excess, it adds to the surplus. Couple of other areas that added to the surplus on the revenue side were catastrophic aid and Medicaid reimbursement. Catastrophic aid is what you get from the state through the federal government for out-of-district placements that are three and a half times more than the state average cost of tuition, so probably around $38,000, everything that you have. You have to put in that, put in for that a year and a year in advance, and so you really don't know what your numbers are, but there is an estimate. Sometimes the estimate that you have is only funded not at 100%, but at 80% or 70% or 60%. So when given the choice, we always choose the lowest number that the Department of Revenue Administration will allow us to do, so we don't get caught with a revenue shortfall. Instead, we'd rather have it go to surplus to reduce the taxes. And when you do this on a continuing basis, you don't really have a lot of spikes or dips because you're returning a consistent surplus over the years. This surplus is around $400,000 higher than the year previous. It's one of our larger ones, but that's a good thing for this year because of the adequacy funding. That was that email that came from the State Department of Education around three o'clock on Friday afternoon. And essentially, what we're looking at is a reduction of around $928,000 in state aid. So call it a million, okay, versus last year. And a lot of that has to do, or most of it has to do, with them doing a recalculation using our current average daily membership figures. And as you know, our enrollments are decreasing. So when we lose 149 students from our base average daily membership, that takes away aid. When free and reduced go down by a certain percentage, that reduces aid. Special ed, average daily membership decreased. A minor thing here, grade, there's a metric, there's a whole metric that puts this formula together. And not reading at grade level by grade three actually went down, so that cost us money. So good work, Mark. But we would gladly give up that money to have more kids reading at grade level at grade three. So when you put all those together, and there's also something called a stabilization grant that says you won't get X amount less than you did in the year prior. That over a 25-year period is going to decrease by 4% every year regardless. It's new legislation passed in 2016. So the stabilization grant, and I'm not going to get into a big explanation of what that is, it's a stabilization factor between years. That money is going to decrease for the next 25 years by 4% until it's zero, so they're phasing it out. So we have, on one hand, a nice surplus to reduce the taxes, which made us feel very good, until three o'clock on Friday, when we received the email from the Department of Education, who did the recalculation based upon the new average daily memberships, which showed our enrollments going down, thus losing 900 and almost a million dollars' worth of state aid. So there's where you have it. And a million dollars is around 28 cents on the tax rate, just to let you know. So 56 on 200,000 or whatever it is on 300, 168.
So the surplus, 4.9 million?
Yep.
After the 928's taken out?
No.
No? Okay, so 4.9 million, so say 5 million.
Yes.
At 28 cents per million?
Yeah.
Reduction on the tax rate?
Yeah.
So we're looking at?
Well, you shouldn't do it that way because there's other revenues in there.
Okay, right, okay.
Okay? We've got to do a comparative year to year.
So can you give me the?
And the increase, the increase in the surplus is around half a million dollars.
Okay.
So I wouldn't try and figure out anything from that. What is going to happen is this year to, last year to this year, we're going to be raising at the local level around $2 million more than we did prior. A million of that is because of the state education grant. If not for that, the tax increase on the school side would be cut in half. So the increase on the school side that people are going to see in their bills is around 56 cents a thousand. Half of that is because of losing a million dollars' worth of state aid. So half of it is beyond our control.
Got you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Are there any questions, or are we just living in shock and awe here? I think we're going with shock and awe.
Shock and awe.
You need to see it written down.
Yeah. I've got a lot of scratches here, which is why I couldn't keep track of them.
I do have a?
Yeah, Cindy?
But in and of itself, the surplus at 4.9 million is about 6% of the budget. Is the surplus in and of itself?
Well, the budget piece was only 3.3.
Okay.
So it's less, so we spent around 97, 96% of our budget.
Okay.
Yeah.
Andy?
So, trying to put this in layman terms so I can understand it. The net amount that we're doing to offset taxes is less than last year because the net result of the reduction in aid. But because our budget went up slightly from last year because of the default, we're going to be paying extra for the default increase, as well as a little bit extra for the loss of state aid, even though we're returning money to offset taxes because we did it last year as well.
Correct.
Okay.
Michael?
Actually, Andy did bring up a good point. Can we actually get the breakdown?
Yeah.
You're going to share it with us?
I can, I don't have it to hand out.
Yeah.
But I could make available and publish on the revenue, on the website, the new budget and revenue summary that was in your budget book with the brand-new numbers. It'll show exactly what's going on. And I can highlight those changes from when we had talked about the budget way back when.
I think that'd be great.
Appreciate it.
So if I remember correctly, when you go in early November, or whenever it is, to the Budget Committee, and you share with them the results of the overall budget spend as well, you have a good summary sheet of this that describes all the areas where savings were and stuff like that.
Yes.
And I think we get a copy of that at the board level as well.
Yes.
That will have the details of where the savings were.
You will get that before the Budget Committee gets to that.
Any other questions on surplus? Seeing them, we will go to item number nine, which is the board's message to the superintendent for 2017-18 budget preparation. And you all have at your place settings the message, based on the feedback that I received that I compiled and shared out, and it seems like we are all good with the compiled message, so I will read it aloud. We'll start with the overview. The Meramec School Board is committed to provide top-quality education, and we can best do that with a budget that is palatable to the taxpayer. As a board, we have faced a new challenge in the 2016-17 budget year, working from a default budget. The situation has put us in a position to make cuts that impacted students and infrastructure. After the election, we had to cut a heat system at the high school, which continues to deteriorate, and we have no possible maintenance option available if it fails. We cannot take such risks going forward. The board is committed to improving communication, and with that, we need to be prepared to have information ready for our constituents to support the need for expenditures and define the consequences if those funds are not afforded to the district in the April election. As budgets are prepared, the supporting information needs to be collected and prepared for easy access to the people that we serve. Knowing we work with districts in comparable demographic markets, we will also want to collect data from these schools to see where Meramec's funding requests lie, where we are, where are we spending more or less than the same. The information will allow the board to take an objective look at where we are and where improvements can be made. We need to maintain our commitment to improving, maintaining, and expanding our technology infrastructure. We need to fund those efforts that will not only maintain academic standards, but expand on them based on the studies and measurement that we have made to identify areas for improvement. These enhancements and expansions need to be specified in the budget, and the intended outcome of the additional investment must be shared. We need to find areas where savings can be achieved and areas where we can make economic cuts that will not impact education. Staffing goals. For educational program budget items, fund staffing appropriate for the population across all levels. Within the high school, fund appropriately for the evolution of the teaching levels. Specifically, if you see a trend to more honors or more lower level, or that the comprehensive level is the main focus, let's make sure our staffing is appropriate. I.e., we don't want to artificially limit the number of honors kids that might make the cut just because of budget/staff forecasts. Let's make sure we have flexibility in this area. Maintenance goals. For any big-ticket items of maintenance, or generally that they're not critical for the year, meaning we could live without them, we would like to consider presenting that expenditure via a warrant article. This makes the funding of capital items more proactive and gives more voter granularity. Examples include a replacement truck or van, which would normally not be covered as a capital improvement plan item. For the capital improvement plan items, we would like to see more items put in a warrant. For some board members, and at the School Planning and Building Committee, paving comes to mind. We want to include the voters in this process and not place all big-ticket items in the operating budget. We will be able to educate voters on the specific items on warrants and their necessity to the district. They have to be expenditures where a delay will not intensely impact operations if not elected in the next budget year. That being said, we cannot make cuts at the expense of infrastructure, making decisions that are penny-wise and pound-foolish with spending, well, place, sorry, staple, a greater burden on future boards in excess of the lesser cost of maintenance being supported by this board. Budget cuts, past and present. As we discuss next year's funding, we must also understand the impact of past budget cuts. Whether it is a cut list or via budget meetings by the board, what was the impact of requests having been asked for before but not having been approved? We expect some of these items may be current requests in the upcoming year's budget. Also, are there any departments that feel they have fallen behind due to cuts or requests that haven't been approved? In addition to the budget, we also want the pre-budget book cut lists, those that do not make it to the board's table. Current educational initiatives needing budgetary attention. Regarding the need for budgetary attention, both of the goals below are high and increasing levels of interest at the national and regional level, and both are already receiving an admirable amount of focus from educators within the district. These are, one, resources for evidence-based initiatives that support student emotional and behavioral health across K through 12. Two, resources to expand successful collaboration/integration of general education and special education services to the benefit of all students in the district. As we strive to deliver the best quality education for all students, we identify these two evolving areas as those which will continue to need support from the board. Conclusion. We are asking for this year's budget to have an unprecedented amount of information, with the goal of presenting and defending a budget to our constituents that will allow Meramec School District to maintain and improve operations and infrastructure in service to students, staff, and taxpayers. Data-driven decisions will allow us to balance the interests to all we serve in our roles. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Andy?
Yeah, just a comment is, I've been on either the Budget Committee or the School Board for about 10 years now, and we've always tended to operate from a methodology of the way we budget, plan our budget, as well as the way we do warrant articles. I mean, no, we tend to do capital things. I think that having had the operating budget defeated for the first time this time has made me look at things differently than I have in all these years I've been doing it, saying it's time to let the voters decide on some of the things that we believe are sort of on the periphery. I think we still owe it to the taxpayers to uphold our, the teaching standards, the education standards, the things that are critical, like roofs and heating, things like that. But I think, at least I did, as one member heard clear, that they want to be able to make decisions, be part of it. I don't necessarily think that the voters want the warrant articles simply so they can vote them down, as much as they want to see what we're spending. And having warrant articles on key items will help them to understand. And will they vote them down? I think a lot of it depends on what we ask for and how we support it. But I think, at least for this year, we should try doing that in one or two cases where we haven't in the past. So I was, I'm in support of the more data, more granularity, as well as the capital improvement methodology with warrants this time, so.
Are there any more questions or comments from the board? Cindy?
No, this is great. I'm really looking forward as the budget process continues. And I, more information is better. I couldn't agree more and support this wholeheartedly. One thing that I wanted to mention that I'm interested in, and I'm not interested in it being part of the budget, per se, is I'm interested in, in part of, actually, just going back to one of the statements in here, which was understanding what's going on in districts around us. And that's just, again, one data point of things that are in our broader community, more than just Meramec. And one of the things that I've been seeing a lot of is this full-day kindergarten. I'm not saying I want that in the budget, but as time goes on, I'd be interested to know what districts are moving to that, because I'm seeing that it's kind of happening at a greater and greater rate. I've also had people in the district ask me about it, but I have no idea what the cost would be for that. So I'm not necessarily looking for it to, like, be micro-analyzed, but I think as we start to think for the future, maybe even beyond this year, that we start to kind of have that idea of what that looks like and whether or not that's a vision of ours. But just having some data around that would be really helpful, particularly when I, you know, we, you know, do we have extra space for it? Is it something that we need to get, you know, some support from, from our Planning and Building Committee or things like that? But that's something that has come up, and it is happening in communities around us. So like I said, I'm not looking for it to be in the budget, but I did want to mention it to see if we can get some information that would surround it.
Excellent. Michael?
Thanks. I just wanted to follow up on a comment that Andy made, just saying that we do listen to the taxpayers, and we try to do our best, obviously, formulate a budget that represents the best education to our children in the district. I think that all of us on this board are open to listening to constructive feedback on ways to possibly have a better budget that taxpayers can, I guess, understand a little bit better. I'm not sure what the exact words I'm saying here, but what I'm looking for is that if anybody in the public wants to make a comment on the budget, I'm open to understanding where they see we might be able to create additional savings or cuts that would not affect the education of our children, not just the fact that we want to cut the budget. So I'm always open to listening to constructive feedback. Thanks.
And I think that Cindy's point earlier about kindergarten is, when we offered this new extension program through the National Adult Ed Program, that a lot of parents looked at that as, you know, the opportunity for full-day kindergarten. So they looked at, they expect it to be the next evolutionary step. So the biggest thing that we have to look at as well, again, data driving good decisions, is what impact will that have for the amount of students who would enroll? I know we've had manageable numbers throughout the district, but there's also a flurry of private kindergarten institutions just within Meramec. So, you know, the potential growth of the program with full-day will also have to be measured. You know, not that it can be, you know, like any enrollment, not that it's going to be scientific, but, you know, a decent projection would help us as well to... Cindy?
And also, I think, you know, if we can get data back on how that's going, this kind of this first year of how we're doing this integrated partnership, that's really helpful, I think, to us as a board as well. But I would say that, you know, a couple of the things I have even, you know, that I've seen on social media have been some of the things that we've already discussed. You know, as far as the expenditures, some of the capital You know, as far as the expenditures, some of the capital expenditures going on a warrant article, we've also seen, at least I have, seen other areas of social media where this full-day kindergarten is becoming an inquiry and at increasing levels. So, I'm not saying I'm pushing for it for this year at all. I'm just saying that, that it's something that's out there, and it's, Amherst just went last year. I think Candia is something that's happening in communities around us. And, and if we do need to get support from the Planning and Building Committee to do any evaluations for maybe the years to come, and any of the data that we might get as a result of what's currently happening in our district, I think is really interesting. I know to me, and I, and I would think the rest of the Board would appreciate at least getting that information.
Sounds good. Are there any questions from Administration?
No, I would just say to go in the direction of what Cinda's talking about. It's my intention to have the three elementary principals here to have a discussion with you. I think they are very prepared to go in the direction of full-time kindergarten. I'm not sure that the 17-18 budget is, is the budget. I think the fact of the matter is, from being in default, we have a number of items that were deferred. And so, I think our first consideration is trying to bring the deferred items back to the fore and, and get them approved. And to the point that Matt made, our conversation last week and the conversation after Friday afternoon might have been a bit different, simply when we realized that the adequacy grant is going to be, let's say, a million less. That causes you to pause, and I think, because we are in default, those things that are of critical importance to us, for example, the HVAC unit on top of the high school roof is critical. And so, we don't take that lightly. And if that means that we put other things off in order to try and realize that, and a roof project, because that protects your greatest assets. Anytime we do a roof, you know, you're, you're protecting what you already have. So I think it just causes us to, as the Administration, to go to the drawing board and be reserved at the same time while trying to tell you how we got where we got. So, we'll have full discussions. But clearly, we understand that, that we just to meet, need to be purposeful in our thinking, especially where the taxpayers have been extremely generous to us over an extended period of time. And I, I don't want to lose that trust factor, you know, so.
Excellent. Andy?
I have a comment to, I'm sitting here thinking, and, and Michael, you talked about communication, and we've talked about communication in every aspect. I think those of us on this Budget Committee, the School Board, and those, those residents that take the time to look at the budget, understand. But I think one of the things that we run into a lot is lack of knowledge about the details of the budget. And I know we put the budget out on the, the website and stuff. From a Communications Committee perspective, as you guys look at this, I'm wondering if this might be an interesting year to, once we get the budget sort of settled out, put together a 30-minute PowerPoint presentation we put on Merrimack TV that summarizes the budget for people to consume more easily. It's just some, I'm thinking about this sort of out loud as we look at the budget here. Something that talks about the areas of the budget, shows the numbers easy to see, and puts some verbal justification into it, just as a good summary so that people understand a little bit better what they're voting for. Because I think that a lot of people say, first time we see anything about the budgets, when I get the voter's guide, even though we provide them every opportunity to, to watch all of our meetings. I mean, you made the comment, people speak out. I mean, in the 10 years that I've been in all these Boards, virtually no one has ever sat in a, in this room for Budget Committee or School Board with anything negative or positive to say about the budget, until you started to cut the middle school, an entire middle school group. That was the only time we ever had any really mass, mass people. So, we have to find a different, we, we can sit and complain all we want about how people don't come to our meetings, or we can try to find a different avenue to educate people, to make them understand all the hard work that all these bodies do, Administration, the Boards, the, the Budget Committee, to share with them exactly what it is, that we're not just throwing dollar bills in the air for fun, but there's a real reason we're doing this. So, I think that that's something I like to see. If we can do it this year, that would be great, but...
Thank you. Seeing no further question or comment on the message, we will go onto item number 10, which is housekeeping stuff. The approval of the September 19th minutes. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes? Andy, do I have a second? Naomi, this is going to fail for a second, it's going to be a short night. Are there any edits on the minutes? Seeing none, we will put the minutes to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, none, and the motion carries 5-0-0. Onto item number 11, which is the consent agenda with Mark.
Thank you. On consent tonight, we have the following two teacher resignations. Jaclyn Moore, Educational Technology Integrator at Master Cola Elementary School, and Douglas Polly, Automotive Teacher at Merrimack High School.
Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? So moved by Cinda. Do I have a second? Made by Andy. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, none. The motion carries 5-0-0. And we're on to item number 12, other. A correspondence, is there any correspondence to come before the Board? Seeing none. B, comments? Are there comments from the Board? Well, I do have one. And I just wanted to say kudos to the Merrimack High School football team and band. Friday night, we were featured on WMUR. The band was at, I believe it was the 5:00 hour, playing live for, for the sports. It was a 45-second segment of them playing the Star Wars theme. They did a great job. And then, the football team, it was really, I'm going to choke up, but they were honoring a little boy who has leukemia, seven-year-old Mighty Max Mendez. And just how our school's featured and how well we represented was, was exemplary, and we should be very proud, so, thank you. Go ahead.
And I just add, this morning I was talking to Athletic Director Eric Sabian, and I believe also there was a huge amount of food collected for the food bank. So, in addition, it's about Merrimack cares, and I think our kids and community are very good at, at making those efforts, so that counts as well.
Thank you, yes.
And I would say, as a school, we're really a subset of the community, and I think that the way the community and the school have embraced the support for Mighty Max is really heartwarming. It's really great to know that you live in a community like this.
Thank you. So, we will go on to item number 13, new business? Is there any new business to come before the Board? Seeing none. Item number 14, committee reports. Are there committee reports? Andy, I think Mike popped us? So start with you, Andy. We're first.
I have two, one of which I didn't go to. The District Wellness Committee met on this past Monday, the 26th, so a week ago today. I had a last-minute conflict and couldn't go, but they, but Mr. Grinier in his, put the meeting minutes out later that night. I've never seen minutes come that quickly. In general, the, the Wellness Committee talks about what they're doing with events in all the different schools, so, so that's good to hear. They talked about how they're going to expend some of the Healthcare Cost Containment Committee, some of the money that they got back from Health Trust, so they're going to do healthy gift bag type things at all the different schools. But one of the things of note is, is that, is that they've talked more again about the Lyme Disease Speaker on the panel that has been bouncing around for about a year, year and a half now. So I think, I don't know if, if, I've got to hook up with Rick to find out, but it looks like they've been reaching out to people to talk about the Lyme Disease, sort of a seminar. So, I think we, I'll try to find Rick and maybe, you know, Marge, you and Rick can talk about what they've got in mind from that, see how to move forward. But, but that was the meeting that happened on the 26th of September. And the other is just a really brief that I attended a meeting of the Suresh Board of Directors last Friday. They're meeting much more frequently now, as we know, there's a, was a change in leadership late this summer. And as a result, with the change in leadership, the Board of Directors has gotten a lot more hands-on in the operations of Suresh and things. So, we find ourselves meeting very frequently now. So, just wanted to let you know that that meeting happened at a Board of Directors level with Suresh.
Michael, is your agenda?
I did. We, I went to the Parks and Rec meeting last, was last week, I think. They all blend together. And just wanted to continue to just comment on how amazing Matt is at actually putting out all the events in town, and just wanted to reference that the Halloween Party will be on October 28th for all the ghosts and goblins that want to go, at Wasan Run Park. I think it's 5 to 8, if I recall. Yes, 5 to 8 p.m. And also, the dark park is a go, so.
Great news. And I had a couple, one I could not make, which was the Greater Woods Subcommittee. I had a last-minute family thing, so I could not make it, but we'll catch up in October. And on the 21st, I attended the New Hampshire School Boards Association Board of Directors Meeting, and we had presentations from the Director of the NHIAA, which is the New Hampshire Interscholastic Athletic Association. And they discussed the growth of life as an ath, of an athlete program throughout the state. We are definitely participating in it. Heat in athletes, making sure that there are measures in place to keep our athletes safe in extreme heat conditions. We know that football starts practicing in the summer, a lot of our sports, fall sports do. Making sure that we are keeping conditions for them to be healthy throughout the process. And, you know, what seems to be a trend now is transgender athletes. And the high schools have modeled after the NCAA model for transgender athlete eligibility, but with college level, there's a difference because they can, they will be basically benched for a year once they identify to a new gender, where we don't have that time with a four-year finite high school career. So they're looking at addressing those issues with athletes. The second presenter was the New Hampshire Special Education Association Director, and we talked about the challenges and, you know, as we all know during budget season and from presentations from our Special Ed Director, that there's really not a lot of flexibility with, you know, how special education is funded and how you deliver it. But twists in the game are things like charter schools and, you know, how they're addressing that. So it was, it was a good dialogue with them. And also, we met with the Executive Director of the New Hampshire Principals Association, and they have a very robust mentor program for up-and-coming principals to get them acclimated into their role and thriving, so that we have good long-term infrastructure at our state high schools. So that was a very fun afternoon, actually, very enlightening. And I think that's it. So, are there any other committee reports? Seeing none, we will go on to 15 and skip it for the most part, because there's no public to comment on agenda items. And then 16, I will take a moment to sign the manifest, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Made by Naomi, and do I have a second? Seconded by Cinda. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion passes, 5-0-0. Shocker there. Thank you and good night.